Oh, I'm sorry.
It's about 7:30.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and get started. And I'd like to tell everyone how much I appreciate you being here for the city council meeting this evening. If you would all like to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and we'll follow that with our invitation immediately following. If you could remain standing this evening will be brought by Pastor Andy Fraser from the United Methodist Church here in Bonner Springs. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? God, we thank you for this chance to meet together here in this place, to engage in civil dialogue with each other, to practice our freedom of thought and freedom of speech, to work together toward making this community a better place, God. We thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for each and every woman and man in this place who you've given the gifts and graces to engage in this sort of dialogue. And I pray that your spirit would be present in this place tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, our first piece of business is work presentation from AAA to our police department. If I could have all of you.
Fresh haircut and everything.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Bob Hamilton, and as a couple of your councilmen ask me, no, I am not the plumber. I now work for KDOT. I'm what's called a law enforcement liaison. There's four of us across the state, and I have the northeast part of the state from Lynn County to Salina and north to Nebraska. And I'm not bragging, but I'd have to say I probably got most of the better police departments and sheriff's offices in the state of Kansas in my area. This year, we're honoring your police department with their first traffic safety award, and we work with AAA on these awards by watching the agencies, seeing what they do for traffic safety, and then approaching them to put in for the award. And knowing the chief, when he was with Tonga and Oxy, we visited a little bit about it, and he put in application and was one of the 34 police departments across the state that are receiving a traffic award this year. Some of the things that they have done to receive this award is they have a departmental policy requiring all employees to wear seat belts. And I know that might sound funny to people that, or it's a state law that we put that in there, but we still have a lot of law enforcement plus citizens who are not wearing their seat belts across our state of Kansas. They're involved in Click It or Ticket, which is the seatbelt enforcement that comes up, which will be coming up the week before and the week after Memorial Day. They're delivering the project graduation program to educate Bonner Springs High School students on the dangers of DUI and distracted driving because of texting and other activity. The Citizens Academy Program that they have and the discussion on DUI detection and enforcement. And I've already told the chief, I sat down and found some things that they could add to that next year. We'll get them up a little higher on the totem pole for the award. One thing that really bothers me and why we really look at the agencies that are really deep into traffic enforcement, as you know, last year was one of our highest years for traffic fatalities across our state. And as of last Monday, a week ago today, we were nine under where we were at that time on last year. So hopefully, we're on the right path for that. But your law enforcement officers, I'm a retired law enforcement officer myself from Johnson County, so I know what these guys put up with. As you all know, a little over a year ago, we lost an officer to a drunk driver while he was on a traffic stop. He plowed into the back of him, and our officer was killed. Every day, they put on their badge, their uniform, their belts, and go out here to protect all of us. They're not just protecting us from the burglars and the thieves that we have out here, they're also taking care of the traffic violations we have. And I'll guarantee you, if any of you drive very much, which I do, being a retired officer probably doesn't help me because I talk to myself a lot when I'm driving down the highway with what I see going on here on our streets today. So Chief, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to present the Bonner Springs Police Department with the bronze traffic safety award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I think the only word we had, we're continuing to work hard. I've seen a lot more traffic lately. It's one of the biggest feedbacks we got from the public. They wanted to see the officers out more, do more. We have a list of problem areas that were identified by the public, and we're staffing those accordingly. So you'll see a lot of them out there. Keep calling us. Let us know where you have problems, so we can keep that.
Thank you.
Rolling right along to our next agenda item, which is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council in the open public meeting. All items brought up will be investigated and researched and added as necessary to a future agenda. Is there anyone like to stand and address the city council this evening on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the March 12 meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, COBIE's request for Thrive and Drive, and property maintenance mowing bid award, and concession operation bid award. Is there anything to be pulled by the city staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns by the council?
Just one clarification on the MIB for COBIE's. The larger map included, the whole, but the portion we're talking about for the alcohol sales strictly, the Centennial Park area, right?
Okay.
One question.
Any other questions, clarifications? Seeing none, vote please. Or I'm sorry, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Early? Yes. Dana?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
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 Very good. Onto item number nine, KG Properties LLC IRB public hearing. Staff.
We had a request from KG Properties or KEG, and it was best to bring this forward again as they are increasing the amount they are planning on investing financially. So we are bringing forward a resolution to increase the amount of the bonds and extend the effective of March 25th, 2019. And I would ask you to.
Oh, very good. Yes. Thank you very much. I go ahead and like to have a motion to open the public hearing here at 7:37, and to consider the Kansas sales tax and abhorrent tax exception for property finance with the proceeds of approximately $17,263,122 of industrial revenue bonds.
So moved.
Moved and.
Second.
Go ahead and open the public hearing now at 7:37, and ask for any additional comments from the applicant. Anything? Nope. Nothing? Anything from any of the citizens like to address this IRB request? Seeing none, no pro or cons. One of the fastest public hearings we've had. Go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing now at 7:39.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:39.
Second. Second. And so now we'll move on to the, we need a recommendation or a motion to pass this.
That's number 10.
Uh huh. Oh, that's number 10 now. I'm sorry. Public hearing. Now the action item. For the resolution concerning the IRBs for KG Properties LLC. Any additional? Nope. Anything to add? Nope. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in the approximate amount of $17,263,122 for KG Properties LLC for property tax abatement and sales tax exemption.
Second. Questions, concerns, comments from the council, starting down here, sir.
How long does this go for? I missed that.
Ten years.
The resolution goes for one year through March 2019.
The applicant would either request that he issue the industrial revenue.
Anything else? Just two kids? No.
Nothing?
Nothing. Nothing else? Vote please.
Dana?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations, or thank you very much, both. This is great to see that this is an increase in the size of the, not just increase in costs, so I appreciate that, and I was looking forward to that. Very good. Onto item number 11, which is concerning 2018 water and wastewater rates and fees. Staff.
Hello, Mayor. Good evening. It's our public works director. The rates are already reviewed this time of year. We took a look at the projections based on the study that was done last year. They crawled around, and we're relying on what we expect to be. The water fund is supposed to be what it should be. Wastewater is a little high on the curve. We have some money to commit and get out, and on some capital projects. Recommendation is an increase for both water and wastewater usage fees, including their monthly service fees, also 4% increase on impact fees, which is paid for by development. Pretty much hold the line, we'll be moving in the past.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a 4% increase in water and wastewater service fees, impact fees, and usage rates effective April 1st, 2018.
Second.
Seconded. Thank you. We'll start down here with questions, comments, or concerns. Thank you.
No.
No. We need to include water.
Yeah. I would just say unfortunately, it's no other thing we have to do than raise those rates at times, so nothing there.
Thank you. Vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations, or thank you very much, both. This is great to see that this is an increase in the size of the, not just increase in costs, so I appreciate that, and I was looking forward to that. Very good. Onto item number 11, which is concerning 2018 water and wastewater rates and fees. Staff.
Hello, Mayor. Good evening. It's our public works director. The rates are already reviewed this time of year. We took a look at the projections based on the study that was done last year. They crawled around, and we're relying on what we expect to be. The water fund is supposed to be what it should be. Wastewater is a little high on the curve. We have some money to commit and get out, and on some capital projects. Recommendation is an increase for both water and wastewater usage fees, including their monthly service fees, also 4% increase on impact fees, which is paid for by development. Pretty much hold the line, we'll be moving in the past.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a 4% increase in water and wastewater service fees, impact fees, and usage rates effective April 1st, 2018.
Second.
Seconded. Thank you. We'll start down here with questions, comments, or concerns. Thank you.
No.
No. We need to include water.
Yeah. I would just say unfortunately, it's no other thing we have to do than raise those rates at times, so nothing there.
Thank you. Vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?
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 Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Wood?[1350.12]
So I don't know whether we need to worry about poisonous prickly vines, because it all looked like, you know, it hasn't come out yet. But I thought I'd bring that up. Next, Amber, you and whoever does this thing does a wonderful job, and when I do my homework, I recognize that. And then thirdly, and then I'll leave it alone, is anyone going to the Saturday, April 21st Governing Body Institute that could take me along?
I could probably do that.
Okay, I heard you were going.
Yeah.
Because I don't like to drive.
I've got to ask the manager.
Oh.
My house manager.
Oh, okay.
The baby?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, all right.
Baby manager and myself.
Okay, because I'd like to go to that, but I'd rather not try to find my way around Pecah. I know I came from a big city in the east, but that was a long...
Anything else? Anything else?
Oh, no, no, sir.
Two quick questions. I know there was doing some work on the fire hydrant on Morse, just west of Middleton. Has that been resolved? Is that still...
I think that they finally figured out the source. It was a week where they had to go back on a pretty frequent basis solving it, but I believe they've got it now. We've got it filled and are waiting for, we put in, when it gets to a certain exclamation size, we go in and put global fill, what's called to help prevent. Basically, so I believe that's in the works to get that done. It's just a scheduling contract.
Awesome, thank you. And is there anything you can tell us about what's going into the old Steak 'n Shake? I've heard a couple of different rumors.
Nothing officially yet.
Okay, thank you.
Little parks and recreation notes. We've got a lot of Easter egg action. We got breakfast with the Easter Bunny Friday, March 30th, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the community center. Free teen egg hunt, so for the teens, Friday, March 30th at 8:00 p.m. in Lyons Park. That's a pretty good idea. I like that. 11- to 15-year-olds, glow-in-the-dark eggs, bring it flashlight. Free Easter egg hunt for children 10 and under. Saturday, March 31st, 9:30 a.m. at North Park Soccer Fields. And then followed up with a free dog bone hunt. It's Saturday, March 31st, 1:00 p.m. 30 pounds or less, 2:00 p.m., 30.1 pounds or more. So that's very specific.
I think that's funny.
Looks like electronic locks are being installed at Lyons Park Restrooms on Wednesday, or yeah, Lyons Park Restrooms on Wednesday. They'll open at sunrise and lock at sunset. And the really cool thing, Disc Golf is under construction and scheduled to open in the fall. So we got as many Easter egg items as you can attend, so please go out and support.
I just want to make comment about the, it's over the last, what, six months, a year, you've been supplying us with the ongoing projects, and that has been extremely useful and helpful, and I appreciate that being in there. According to this, it looks like we got a lot of things maybe moving forward over the next six months or so.
There are several items that have been worked for a lot of years. There's one of the big, it's been a very ongoing process, and that's just sort of the way it's been going, because they take a lot of time, a lot, a lot of effort from the developer as well as city staff to get them to where they're at. There's a few things that hopefully will be getting going here.
And then one more thing. I had a constituent that lives on Riverview comment about the road. Have we got any kind of timeframe when that is going to open up?
It's really at this point under related. I think they've essentially gotten the first culvert, really, and said, "Oh, it's essentially done." It's a question now, just going through, there is a section there that we have to do with the pavement, with the asphalt going on the, onto the culverts, and we also have to go back in and redo some driveway approaches as well because of the disruption that occurred there. So I'm thinking it'll probably be in the next, I would tell you that by the end of the year. It'll be...
Are we sure?
Yes. I think the next few days we'll be finishing up the project. But again, it's really whether it's...
Right, so there's a good chance in the next two to three weeks we could.
Yeah, it'll be off this time.
Yeah, good. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment staff. We're moving ahead on the cemetery pavilion. That's, we got the pad board, looks like they're ready to start construction above ground up there. I understand we have the kit for that?
Yes, sir.
Good. And we don't have a date that will start, or do you not know that yet?
No. Like you mentioned, we're waiting on some of the prep work at the site to actually take place and then it's just a question of schedule and manpower. Volunteer effort involved with that, so we'll actually assemble that. So I would look to the cemetery advisory committee to kind of put that in motion as far as kind of getting the manpower together, but as far as...
Well, they're looking forward to it.
Yes, yes, you all are. It's certainly a well-kept issue out there.
Good, thank you very much.
Very good. Moving on to the mayor's report. You mentioned weeds, you might, that, the weed you mentioned, the...
Prickly weed.
Prickly weed, prickly pine. I don't know if it's a nuisance, weed nuisance or a noxious weed, but the nuisance enforcement or the codes enforcement officer has a lot of information as to that, and you may be able to get information from her various resources, so I'd put you in touch.
Mr. Prickly, they're calling it a...
They're calling it a prickly that will grow up anything that has a backbone to it.
It's like a, this is...
Vine.
Great vine.
Okay, and he called it prickly.
It will smother the tree that you see on the bottom, car drive.
Yeah.
The trees.
East Coast, they call it. Kudzu.
Kudzu?
Kudzu.
No, that's...
On the east coast.
I'll ask the tree more, they know a lot more about those things.
I think that's a little different than...
It's not, it's Kudzu.
Okay. I'll look into that.
I just wondered if it was something else, if it's poisonous, we can't say, okay, everybody bring your machete out and, you know. But if it's ruining the areas that make Bonner Bonner, it would be nice.
Cut it and let it with her or something, I don't know. Yeah, they would know better than I.
Thank you.
The new flag that the old Steak 'n Shake is carrying seems to be Italian. I've only heard it rumored that it's a Italian fast food that's called either Bilmies or Bellinis or...
Villas.
Villas, something like that. So I'm not familiar with the chain, I'm not familiar, I have no official news, but officially, I welcome any new businesses to Bonner Springs and thank you for coming if you are actually coming. The, from some of the information I was looking over today for the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet, which will be Thursday evening, and you're all invited to come, please let Amber know the city is sponsoring a table at the event. We chose to support our local chamber as opposed to the Kansas City Kansas Chamber, and so those of you who'd like to be a part of that are more than welcome. I have to warn you, though, the entertainment is going to be less than stellar. It will be, it will be myself and Tiny McTaggart giving State of the City addresses for, as what they are. Traditionally, we've always rolled out the State of the City at the mayor's banquet in August, but I'll be happy to give a sneak peek to that, I guess. I'll give a sneak peek to that, I don't know about happy.
Interpret dance or vibe or...
All of those things, probably. Taking into account how wonderful my public speaking is, so. And in that research, I found that the, this portion of Wyandotte County's property, residential property tax valuations have gone up on the average of 5%. And so that's a significant increase. That valuation will result in an increase in the amount of funds that we're able to utilize here at the city. But to recognize again that the property tax portion that the city is able to utilize for, that's claimed on each individual's property taxes, is only 20% of your overall property tax bill. And with that, that is a big portion of our total revenue that we use for this, for the year. 40% of our revenue? So I think that, that's pretty much, I have a lot of numbers rolling around in my head right now, and I have to apologize because I've been going over an award-winning budget presentation, and I don't know how many of you have remembered seeing our budget booklet that we received, but comparing it to other budgets, it is phenomenal. So it's very easy to read, and I appreciate that, Sean and the staff. So that'll be a portion of what the State of the City includes, as long as some of the development that we spoke about here tonight, and some of those things that are on the chalkboard. So other than that, I don't have any additional news to bring to Bonner Springs, unless you have questions for me. Thank you all for coming, and we're adjourned.